We've got some clock, so let's start it up. Welcome to the school committee meeting. We are being recorded. If anybody else is recording, please let us know so that we have record of it. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to straighten the agenda just briefly here. I'm going to turn to Dr. Biata.
Chairman, thank you. I'd ask that the committee and the public get to say tonight, join me in brief moment of silence for recent passing of our kindergarten student Ariela Rose Sarosha. Tonight, the wake is forty eight and it's being buried tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, first up on the agenda, we have the vote to approve the minutes of September twenty third, twenty twenty one, open and executive session meetings. Has everybody had a chance to look those over?
Yes.
Are there any corrections or comments?
No, no.
Oh, I apologize. Before we continue, I do want to further record state that Mrs. Kathleen Stern is actually joining us via Zoom, so she is present as well. Sorry, back to the meeting minutes now. Seeing no questions, comments, or criticisms, I would extend a motion to approve both the open and executive session minutes from September twenty third, twenty twenty one. So move.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
So she?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sodas is yes. All right, next up is the warrants.
I reviewed and approved the following warrants: school expense warrants, September twenty first, twenty twenty one, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, twenty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. October seventh, twenty twenty one, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents. School payroll warrants, September twenty third, twenty twenty one, one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty cents. And October seventh, twenty twenty one, one million, ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and two cents. I wish to enter them into public record.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the student representative update. Do we have Zoe and Malia with us?
Yep, we're here. Hi. Um, so this week, we actually asked the principals to kind of get the kids to talk about how it's been transferring from hybrid or remote completely to now fully in person. And just kind of like, what were the disadvantages, if there are any, or mainly what? How has teaching been different? How has learning been different? Just kind of overall, how are the changes? And we've got pretty good responses. I'll start with the LGN. Not very much on topic, but they did get a couple. They said, I love getting to make new friends and playing with them during recess. I like the teachers at the LGN. I like that we are in person and that I get to see all my friends in class. I like all of it, and I like that we have great choices for lunch in cafeteria. It was a good one to add, but yeah, it's pretty positive over there. And Malia has the next school yell, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so Mr. Gagan said that the benefits of in-person for them were being able to make and be with friends, learn from the comfort of school, get to interact with others, get to have fun in school, have the ability to be more creative in person than just being online with better projects and hands-on activities, seeing everyone in the cafeteria at lunch and being able to play with everyone at recess. Then for the disadvantages, they didn't really have much. They they kind of looked at me blankly and said, I don't know. So it's a good thing. How has learning changed since before COVID? They said it's gotten a lot harder. And when asked why, they said, well, everything is getting harder since last time I was in second or third grade. So for fifth graders, they said that they now have two switch teachers, which is just too much. It's a lot to handle. And they said that they looked at things from from the above in terms of benefits, more in-school projects, group work, fun activities, experiments, and fun. For the middle school, they, the NMS Step Program just participated in Unified Bachi at Beckwith Middle School in Rehoboth, and it was a great day with nine student athletes and four staff members attending, Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Fitton, and Principal Hayward. And the team's next match is Wednesday, October twentieth, at Case Junior High School in Swansea, if you want to go support them. So that was it for the yell on the middle school. I think Zoe's going to the high school.
Yep, so high school has a little bit more responses. For the benefits of in-person learning, they said, I seem to get better grades, less procrastination, easier to pay attention, more hands-on learning activities, and see teachers more. For things that they miss from hybrid, they miss working from home, the staggered late arrival, the staggered arrival and late arrival. There was less traffic, which is a problem that student council is working on right now, hopefully. Got to sleep in and stay at home some of the time, and remote Mondays were great. Some disadvantages is that five days a week is tough and waking up every day and that they're always at school. But post-COVID changes, a lot more online resources, generally, teachers have been more flexible with deadlines. Some people say less homework, some people say more homework, and there is definitely a lot less paperwork. But yeah, going back to how student council is working on the traffic, maybe, we also did a school-wide poll, and I think Malia has a little bit more information about that.
Yeah, so we decided that we're seeing a lot of stuff that we were looking into, like what students were thinking about the high school from like the schedule changes and the traffic and just transferring back to in-person. So I think like a week ago, right, a week or two ago, we sent out a poll just trying to cover, you know, what students want to kind of touch base on. So we included things such as like, what do you do during LLB, which is like our study hall block? What do you use that time for? During LLB, how much of the time do you use for school? And how long should it be to meet your needs? What's your preference for the LLB? Because this year, we switched to a schedule where we alternate between ten and thirty minutes. So we're curious to see what kids think and friends having like a consistent time or the alternating schedule. Talked about morning traffic to see how it's affected students because it's a pretty general thing that a lot of kids have impacted, just getting to school on time and being late. Masks. And we also included a question just to talk about any other issues or things they might want to look at talking about. So we didn't really work it into the like tonight's kind of report because we didn't really fully look at the results yet, but just that's something that I'm looking at right now from the student council point of view, just trying to get more kids involved at the high school and having more stuff to say to you guys. So yeah, that's something that'll be coming up once we can figure out kind of how to quantify the data a little bit more and figure out what we're going to do with it. But yeah, just wanted to mention that really quickly because I think I mentioned last time that we were gonna be doing a poll, and that's how it turned out. Oh, yeah, I think that's it for us. If Zoe doesn't have anything else to add.
No, all good.
Great. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it. I certainly empathize with the kid who didn't want to do five days a week. Tried to get that by my bosses, and they don't quite. Okay, next up on the agenda, we had the superintendent's revised goals for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two.
Right, so these are continuation of twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, several in June. I gave you the action items with the update, the update of the continuation, and then resetting a couple of the goals. The panorama student survey, grades three through twelve on school climate, parent notifications are going out. And then the health survey for six to twelve, if you remember the health survey, that also requires a parental agreement. Those will be going out, and those students will be taking that during the months of October and early November. The survey, the health survey will be collated as normally is. And then we get the graphs and we get the actual report. The panorama survey is the same thing. Jen and O'Neil, our superintendent, will come back to you with some of the things that we've learned from the data that we're seeing, and then those will be incorporated into the next plan, which really is aligning with my professional development plan in terms of putting together a plan about what are we, what are we seeing in the survey? So for example, if we see an increase in bullying being reported by students in the survey, then we should act on that through curriculum, through speakers, all of that stuff. If we see increase in marijuana usage, for example, it's legal in Massachusetts, but it's illegal for children and on school grounds, then how is that, how is that happening? All of it on the health survey is a hundred percent anonymous. We did not take any tracking whatsoever. So it's literally filling what you think. The panorama can be done in multiple ways through actually looking at individual students to create students who are saying that they don't feel connected to school, for example, which is one of the questions that we learned pre-COVID that we did with the students is that we had bodies of students that didn't feel that they were felt connected to school on a daily basis. That's good information to have, either as a group from grade three or to then track it individually. That becomes part of the panorama platform, which actually keeps track of their grades, their discipline, their self-reporting, and their attendance, and then it shows up as a marker for us to work with kids. All of a sudden, we start to see grades going down. The marker might show a yellow or a red, meaning they're on task or on grade level, et cetera. So we've had really good success with preemptive strikes. And again, it's controlled, it's controlled by parents. They don't want to do it. They don't have to do it. And that's by state requirement, by the way. So that's, that's on there for your information, and you'll get a report in probably December, January on some items, and then early spring, and then we'll wrap it up by typically, we go into the first meeting in September so that I can put it all together over the summertime, but my goal is to get it to you, to the June school committee meeting as much as possible.
One clarification, so is that a completed goal or is that a completed and revised?
That's a, so that's a, that's a completed goal. I have some data to share with you in terms of the evaluations and stuff, and I'll get that to you.
Okay, so no revision, that's just.
Right. And that was, if you remember, we used four, four goals for teachers last year, as all administrators, those four goals, what we completed because we were such in an awkward teaching and learning situation with the hybrid model until March.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? All right, we'll move right along to item number five. That's grades PK through twelve enrollment update.
Right, so you'll see that you have two sheets of you tonight. The, both of these are reflective of what is typically done in Massachusetts, which is we report according to our internal data from October first. It's actually been extended this year because they want us to take a look, by us, I mean, public schools, look at the number of students who are socio-economically struggling and spend more time figuring that out, if you will. But you'll see that our district enrollment overall, this would be students that are in district, students that we provide services to out of district, school choice enrollment, REEDs, which is part of our, not part of our enrollment, but part of being here with us, is a total of twenty-four hundred and fifty-eight. The prior year was twenty-four fifty-four. We're actually up overall four. We're down six in district enrollment. The positive one is the out of district number. You'll see one from forty-four students out of district to currently thirty-two, but I will tell you, and growing. We're probably going to see a number of getting closer to forty before the end of the year because of special education needs during the IDP process that takes place. And we have an increase of twenty-three students in school choice, up from one sixty-three to one eighty-six.
I mean, I have a district numbers, it's going to be variable.
Yeah, the out of district, it's based on the team, the parent, the team coming together, using the data and the best process, if it cannot be done in a least restrictive environment within the school system, and then students can go out and then we protect the tuition cost, the services cost, including transportation.
Refresh my memory, do we have a cap on school choice?
We have a cap. We close choice September one for your vote. We had no cap at the middle and high school, and I believe we had caps of five and ten throughout, and that didn't count siblings.
Any thoughts on those caps?
Well, to be quite honest, because of coming back from COVID, I'm actually kind of happy, I'm coming back from the models that we've been in, I'm kind of happy that we don't have classrooms with twenty-six and twenty-seven kids at the elementary level. Our elementary level classes at the Yale are roughly around twenty-two, twenty-three, which is actually lower than usual. Some of those might change just because of the service delivery model, the special education with inclusion at the early elementary grades are in really good shape, probably twenty-two, and it's low as eighteen in the kindergarten class of eighteen and nineteen, which is what we prefer. And that was due to the hiring of that teacher, the savings that we made, which became a priority during the summertime because we've seen some numbers grow at the LGN. So I would say what we did for this year was a good idea. I think we look at it again next year. One of the things that's really interesting that in these numbers is that fifty-two students are currently homeschooled. That's double what we normally get. And that has a number of different reasons. As you know, the homeschooling decision is one that's a very private decision that the district, we can't ask too many questions. All we do is review the curriculum that is going to be provided and sign off on it and go through that process. So we could have actually seen an increase in our local student body, meaning in-district student body this year. We had a ton of registrations in the month of August. And it hasn't basically stopped. We've been tracking our numbers every day. So this twenty-four, this just twenty-four fifty-eight, which encompasses everything, that's been pretty steady for the last two weeks, but the first three weeks of school, that went down to, up to, down to, up to. We had some families that went from district to school choice because they bought a house out of town, so it fluctuated a little bit.
How are numbers look for alternative schools in the area like Charter School Southeastern?
So we don't have those numbers yet. We'll get those afterwards, but I think you'll see that both of those are pretty stable, high eighties, low nineties for the charter, for the charter school. It's been where we've been for the last couple of years. I think you'll see, and we did have returning families again this year, and then the Southeastern and the Aggie are pretty stable. They're going to probably be in that mid-ninety for Southeastern, reaching a hundred, and then the Aggie, the numbers get into the less than twenty, less than twelve some years, really fluctuates. They are opening or have opened a brand new school at the Aggie, so.
Yeah, I drove by, that's what triggered it. I was burning yesterday, so.
A hundred million dollars, a hundred million dollars that all of the towns are paying for. I believe you have a, I believe the town of Norton's cost is seventy thousand dollars a year, every year for twenty years, not including tuition.
Now, in the event we don't place a child at that school, are we still on the hook for that?
No, it's per, it's tuition-based per volume. So if a student goes, you get charged. Student doesn't go, you don't get charged. So if they all of a sudden went from fifteen kids enrolled at the Aggie to thirty-five kids, then you'd see an increase in tuition of probably well over or close to a million dollars.
John, I'm thinking about this right. School choice, we could probably absorb larger numbers at the JCS, the LG and the HAY. But the way that we model our middle school would make it difficult to take them in going forward. In other words, we could add a teacher at the JCS or the LG. But adding one at the middle school is a little tougher because of the way it's structured.
Yeah, so your middle school concept for teaching and learning is that you have two teams, and then you have the content areas divided into those two teams.
And there's a finite number on each side.
Correct, so you have an English, math, science, social studies, the common core, and then you have your electives and your required PE health classes. So what happens is if all of a sudden you added, and we've done this in the past with AIA math and English and all of that, we didn't see some of the fruits of that labor over time. So that's one of the reasons why we went back to the more traditional model. When it comes to the elementary, it's a straight, if you have a hundred and eighty kids and all of a sudden you have a hundred, you have two hundred kids, you add another section, you're distributing the students, which is what we did with kindergarten.
Right.
The only other issue is, though, that, you know, we have a lot of debates or views about the space in the buildings. I can tell you that the space is getting a little crunchy because, you know, once again, we started another special education in internal program at the LG that took up another space, which is a good thing. That's not a bad thing. But if you're trying to open up another section, that becomes more of an issue of where do you start to move people around.
Any other questions on that? All right, let's move right on to the special enrollment.
So the, the special education enrollment update is again just taking a look at the total number of students that are receiving some type of services in the district, and that number is five hundred and forty-six as a total. I think that's come, that's come down since September. We track it every month. This is a student that's out of district, a student that's getting attendant services. For example, a homeschool student might be getting speech. That's on this count. And it's not broken down by disability type because I always worry that that could actually communicate to a group of people, you know, staff members, the public on who has a certain disability, and I don't think that's appropriate. But you will see that there's some areas where the total number of students in comparison to the enrollment gets us pretty high, and I'll give you an example. Your fourth grade, current fourth grade percentages is, you know, climbing at thirty percent. Now, a lot of that is those secondary services that are primary services for that student. So that would be your speech, your OT, your PT, and a lot of inclusion kids, but there are ninety-four students getting specialized services. And as you can see, those continue all the way through high school. And we currently have three students that are over eighteen but not yet twenty-two, and those are part of our responsibility. So that's kind of like the breakdown so that you can see, and these numbers fluctuate more than any other number in the district because meetings are taking place every day in all five schools around service delivery models.
Any questions on that? All right. Next up, we have the superintendent's report on pathway options.
So we, as you know, pre-COVID, we started working on some of this, and during COVID, I back to, to March of twenty twenty, we were spending a lot of time taking a look at different pathways for our students. I'm a very big supporter of attending college, but I don't think that you have to attend college to be a successful community member in any community in Massachusetts. And so there are things that we need to start looking to do for students that provide them an option. So there are four here that we're working on. There's an early college. I'll go back and explain them a little bit. There's an innovation pathway. There's a career technical education, or vocational, as some of you would call it. And then there's one that we're currently calling alternative education, but we want to come up with something that's better than the word alternative because it places a, a label on it that I think is inappropriate. The early college has been the one we've spent a lot of time on. This is the opportunity starting as early as the spring for students at North High School to earn twelve to eighteen college credits at UMass Dartmouth. Bachelor, the Boston Architectural College is also going to be involved with this, and we're currently not ready to announce a private school, but we're going to be working with a private school. What's different about this approach is that it's different from dual enrollment, number one. It's literally these courses count for both high school credit and college credit. So a student could earn twelve to eighteen credits in, in, for example, the area of biology. They could check off two years of science first or one year of science at the high school, but literally transfer an entire semester to UMass Dartmouth or the UMass College system because they're, they use the same. Our partners that we're working with is UMass Dartmouth. We're also working on the funding source for that. What's different is that we are including, including high schools in the area. So we're working with Oliver Ames in Easton, East Bridgewater, Mansfield, Taunton, Rockton. We're coming in with another school that's on there, plus Hanover, Attleboro Public Schools, and it's a growing list. The cohort model right now is that these classes would be a combination of hybrid and online after-school hours and evening. Because as you know, high school schedules are so different from place to place, trying to fix it. However, students could have a time period during the school day where they have a place to go and work on that course so that they're not just totally overwhelmed, especially if they're in the arts and sports after school or they're working after school. The innovation.
So they would be taught by somebody from?
They're being taught by UMass Dartmouth professors and/or the potential that our staff could become UMass Dartmouth adjunct professors or other school systems, high school teachers.
And, and they're learning at a college level.
They're learning at a college level, the same material, but with a high school cohort of students. So instead of having a high school student take classes with a college student, it's high school students from the area taking the cohort together.
How does that work for their GPAs? Weighted differently?
It'll be part of their AP process, the same thing, because it is considered a college class. It's not taking a test to get credit for those colleges that accept credit that we all know is minimal, but it does work for the GPA, so it would work that way. You'll eventually be hearing about that, too. The innovation pathway is the state application process. Jen and Ethan are actually reading that. It's a pretty complicated process where we have to use local workforce needs. So we're in Bristol County, so we would have to use Bristol County information. We have to work with our school to careers partners that we work with currently, which is consist of CCON public schools, Attleboro North, Attleboro Mansfield, and us. And we're looking in areas of steam to really concentrate in for the pathway. That application process is probably going to be filed over the next, I'd say, eighteen months to twenty-four months because it is a pretty specific process that you have to utilize it. So it's really trying to figure out what are the needs of the area of Norman that would actually support the labor force, which right now I would say is a lot considering that everybody's having a hard time finding. The fourth, the third one is career technical education. Some of you would know that in the traditional sense of vocational technical education, we do have a Southeastern. This is not about, for the public to know, we currently have a chapter seventy-four Business Technology Marketing Program already that we started two years ago. We enrolled about sixty-six to sixty-six kids last year in the program. They're taking courses that are aligned to career technical education. What we're looking at next is public safety. We're looking in the area of EMT and criminal justice and all of that, that again, that's an application process with the state to become certified. That one particular also probably needs the hiring of staff, so we really have to take a look. We're not looking to duplicate electrical and plumbing. We wouldn't have that type of space and materials, et cetera. But there are a number of new career tech ed programs that are very much workforce and or community college and or specific technical school or even four years. So again, each of these can go in so many different directions and actually put into twine. The alternative education program model that's before you here, and again, I'd like to change this name to something more creative and doesn't have a stereotype with it, is to really take a look at our graduation requirements for students who are not in the traditional sense, students that beyond having to take four years of English and having to take US history and having to take PE, which are all state requirements, what would those local requirements look like for a student? So you're looking in those particular areas and all of these as well, but in that particular area, you're looking at cooperative education, working with students who are working, who want to work, who are in specifically working as a, could be working as a laborer, for example, and learning a trade, but not necessarily in the traditional sense of a vocational program. And what does that look like? Or go to a student who can actually take courses here. So they want to go to college, but they want to take a CNA program. Could we put a CNA program and allow, as you guys all know, a couple of years ago, we had a student who graduated with a CNA and is now at Boston College in the nursing program. I'm sure getting that background didn't hurt her in her process, although she was also a fantastic student. So in this particular case, the reason why I don't like alternative education because it labels some type of a student. This could be any student, you know, and, and, and that's important to me because, you know, once the kid gets labeled, this could also be motivational, depending on their background. So this is just the general report. You're going to start to see some more information at the school committee meetings about these. We do have some administrators that are working on some of this, and then we want to bring in some staff, and then we also need professional expertise, and two of the three of these or three of the four of these, we're going to need professional expertise. We have the Education Alliance already working with us with the early college. The innovation pathways requires all that data and information set from workforce, so that's going to require that we also have people in the industry be part of that. Career tech ed requires that you have a advisory board of people that are actually working in the field. That's part of the requirement. So just to give you that general information.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Go back to the early college. Who covers the tuition? Not necessarily how much, but who covers that?
Right now, we're working on trying to create between all of the schools and UMass the best tuition for students. So typically, for example, a graduate course at a state college might cost six thousand dollars, and you're basically dividing it by all the bodies. However, we are also going after some federal funds as a cohort. That's one of the ideas is that if, if it's just North High School going after it, it's going to be a problem. But if we have kids from different types of communities and, and. But if we have kids from different types of communities and, and different backgrounds, that will only help in the application process. And then third parties is the other way as well. Federal stimulus money is something that all of the superintendents that are in this group have had some discussions about because it, it would be, it does fit the criteria. But eventually, as you'll know, the money goes away. So you have to come up with, with a scenario that keeps some type of finances coming in, including partners. The innovation pathway one does potentially have some grant money that comes with it for startup costs.
And then another question. So what's in it for UMass? Is, is the expectation that they're going to capture some students for the UMass system?
Sure.
But there isn't a requirement?
Right. The expectation is that we have declining enrollment in every community that's not a city in Bristol County and, and around us right now. And what's happening is they have currently in the UMass system seen declines in some of the UMass college, state colleges, and as high as one-third, thirty-three percent less students attending in one of the state colleges, state universities in North Shore. UMass Dartmouth themselves are down ten percent. And all of the schools, one of the best success stories has been UMass Lowell. Another success story has been UMass Boston. UMass Amherst is huge, as we all know. I'm not hearing statistics coming out of them that it's hurting, but the competition is becoming more significant. The other issue that is important is that we're starting to see more and more private schools no longer do a needs-based financial aid, but solely merit-based. If you remember three years ago, Holy Cross announced that although they have a hundred million dollar endowment, that over the next thirty years, they would have zero. And so they moved to a merit-based system and not a needs-based system. So what this does is also make our kids more competitive regardless of their applying. So if they're applying to St. Anzim's, for example, or they're applying to, to Stonehill, they might not get any per se credit, but they could make an argument for some type of credit depending on the major. But more importantly, working around the idea that they didn't take a AP test just to show that they could do college work. They actually took a college class to show that they could do college work.
I think we all know that the UMass system, UMass Amherst, it costs kids from Massachusetts more money to go there than to go out of state.
Well, look at the, look at the humane, humane, UMass price. Pretty creative.
Right.
Approach.
So it would be nice for our students to have a little bit of a buffer if they chose to go into the UMass system to have those courses accepted as part of their college credit to save them a semester or a full year or.
Yeah, and I think if you have declining enrollment, it's kind of like this choice decision. Do you, do you try to, you know, market yourself and, and fill a seat? Even though you're only getting three and a half years of tuition instead of four, or do you just say, no, I'm not going to take four years of tuition?
Karen, I'll tell you, I don't understand how the people in Massachusetts aren't up in arms about the, the cost of the state tuition.
Yeah, it was cheaper for
It is insane.
college-age kids to leave the state.
I didn't realize that difference.
So you're basically paying for them through your taxes and then when your kid gets in, it's supposed to be, as you know, they screw you up as well.
And it's mainly UMass.
It's a great opportunity.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make one comment. I think that that's a great idea for the kids to be going to school with students of their own peer, their own peers, because some kids might be intimidated by it and they might not take the class because they're too intimidated. But knowing that their peers are going to be part of it, it makes a huge difference. And speaking from UMass Amherst, where both of my kids went, it was cheaper for them to go to Southern New Hampshire University, Franklin Pierce or the other one, just because of the money that they gave. UMass was the most expensive.
One of the things I learned about King State, interesting that you just brought that up. I just recently learned that King State will take any student that's in a traditional career tech education program in Massachusetts. And if they're going to King State for four years to major in the major that they graduated from the book, they're giving them a full, a full semester of credit. So they're only going there for three and a half years, or they decide to go for four years because they're going to piggyback on what usually happens, as you know, is they piggyback on studying abroad or they end up with another minor or a double major or go for another certificate. But it was interesting that the college, some colleges are being created like that as, as part of their approach.
And it might not hurt. Joe, I know that Wheaton is in the process of a major transition with sort of a president search, but it might not be bad to sort of start a conversation with them.
Yeah, then a new president comes on board, I believe in January. The president has been named and I plan to, four weeks after that, to introduce myself and see if we can have some further conversations.
Okay, we're going to move on to number eight. Vote to elect Kathleen Stern as school committee delegate at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Annual Business Meeting on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Chairman, tonight you are not voting on the resolution, but you do have them. You'll vote it at your next meeting, but Ms. Stern has been your delegate. Delegate is that she attends at minimum the meeting on the sixth of November where they vote on all the resolutions and she represents your vote at that meeting unless you just give her the room to vote the way that she wants.
Kathleen, do you want to do that again?
I have to be honest. So right now, I guess nobody from our district is attending and right now it's only virtual. So I'm on a waitlist for an in-person. If it does come through, you know, I, I would go in person, but usually the delegate meeting is either Wednesday, Thursday or Friday. For some reason this year, it's on a Saturday morning. So unless we, unless, I wanted to make sure that you guys did get the resolutions because unless you have strong feelings about one or another, I, I don't even know how they're going to do it virtually.
Yeah, I don't, I don't love. I don't love number nine, but outside of that, I really didn't have any issues with it. And nine, it's, it's not a hill I'm going to die on, so.
Yeah.
Well, here's my, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So Kathleen, I, I, I'm also, as you typically know, I go down there, you know, through all this, that we've actually presented at and all of that. Where the idea of attending one of those meetings, meetings virtually all day from workshop to workshop just as it entices me, to be quite honest. I think my concern that maybe needs to be discussed at some point is the purposes of the resolution. They seem to be to, to, to get a lot of things started and then they seem to die. And so wouldn't it be better to take a resolution and vote it and bang on the door some elected officials and say, can you file this bill, please?
I totally agree because we, we voted, I think it was two years ago. We voted an NCAST thing that I have never seen again, and we also voted on the MTELS that I've never seen again. So I, I don't know why we vote for some, like you say, you vote for something, it passes or it doesn't pass and then there's no, nothing ever done about it. It, it is frustrating.
I, I think my response to that probably is I think, I think there might be a vast overestimation of how much power we hold. Sure. I mean, that's just the reality of it. That's what it is.
So you could vote tonight to put Kathleen into that situation and then, and then rescind the vote the, the week of and, or, you know, before the next meeting. Or she may be able to attend that meeting. The issue is going to be, there's going to be a bit, a little bit like this. If you're there, they're still allowing for people online. So then how are we gonna? When voting on something that's resolutions, that's going to be part of, of, you know, something that's shared with the governor and all of that, legislature and all of that, I don't know how you're going to do that. Maybe some, maybe they have a clicker thing that they're using or some type of.
Or as we just discussed, it's not shared with the, the governor or the reps. So we're just voting on it.
Yeah. So, so how does that leave us? Kathleen, do you, are you okay with doing it again?
Yeah, I, yeah, I have no problem doing it. I just, it might come down to the point of if, if they have it, I will go. But if they don't have it, then, but like Dr. Bieta says, we can rescind it, I guess, so.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's do that then. All right. I would extend a motion to elect Kathleen Stern as our school committee delegate at the Massachusetts Association School Committee Annual Business Meetings on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Alan Galloway?
Yes.
Sherry Cohen?
Yes.
Dan Sheedy?
Yes.
Dennis Glass, yes. That's going to bring us to other business and Dana, I'm going to start with you. You have something.
Yep. We have a open invitation from the Norton Veterans Council regarding the Veterans Day Parade in town. The parade will be held Thursday, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. In the event of bad weather, ceremonies will be inside of the Yell. Participants in the parade will include boys and girls of Norton. Parade will start at the Yell School at nine-thirty and step off at ten. So meeting at nine-thirty. All military personnel are welcome to march. Parade will go down east on Main Street to the Veterans Stone Monument at the corner of Pine and Main for a brief ceremony. Upon completion, the procession will reform and proceed west from the Town Common. For continued Veterans Day ceremonies, this year's parade marshals are William McNeil and Linda Winship. Upon completion, all formation will return to the Yell for refreshments in the cafeteria. Please RSVP by calling Gary Cameron, five oh eight two six five zero four four two.
Anybody down there?
No.
No.
Just one of the handouts that you have from BICO, it's a quarterly report. That's for your information and it is required by statute that I provide that to you and you'll see that there's a lawyer of the district being solid, now the effect of the record.
Okay, I have one thing and it's kind of a follow-on to some that's been going on for a while here. After kind of discussing with, with members of the school committee individually and putting out some feelers to some other people, I think with respect to the, the policy issue that we have right now in front of the union. Joe, you and I have kind of discussed this slightly, I think. We need to start thinking about moving forward here. So I, I think we, we're all in agreeance that what we're going to look at is not this coming Monday, but the following Monday to start that up. It should give you enough time to get whatever information you need from parents as far as who's in or who's not in. It's not to say that we're not going to continue to engage with the NTA about this. We have to. And certainly against, it's, it's their right and they should. But at some point, we need to start moving forward here on this. So.
Okay.
Will do. Okay. Does anybody have any objections to that? Just, I, I don't, I don't think anybody does, but.
So October twenty-fifth?
October twenty-fifth is the date that I know. Yeah. So not this Monday, but the following Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tom meetings that evening at seven.
No, I just, I was wondering why I had the date in my head for some reason.
Okay, no other business for you here?
I just have a quick question. I'm wondering if it's possible. I know there was some talk about people wondering and a lot of speculation about what the numbers are at the high school as far as getting to that eighty percent number. Is that something that we can publicly share?
Sure.
With people? Is that something you want to talk about? I don't know if we have numbers for high school and middle school, just so people know where at.
Middle school is a working project because as you know, we have an entire grade that, that's a bubble. In terms of the high school, we just reached seventy percent. That's all in, seventy point eight percent, I think it was. I'll get, I should get a number Monday or Tuesday. I did get a request today from a, a third party about doing another clinic just for the high school. And as you know, the boosters are also up for potentially staff. But people can also just use CVS or Walgreens right now. So Hockington has just received permission for the eighty percent rule at their high school. I know that Ashland.
That's been derep.
They're approved. They now have to go back to the school committee to have the school committee change the policy to say that for this school, it's
Right.
it's eighty percent will have been met.
And they must be leading that way. If they're, they're seeking approval, it must be.
I believe so.
Yeah, it sounded like from the article that the, the members came in before they could get everything to get it for their meeting. So they pushed the boat out. Yeah, that requires DSE.
Yeah, DSE is requiring us to basically file a, a statement saying that I hereby certify that, so on and so forth. We did have numbers. So to Sherry's question, we had about thirty-four students at the high school that are not part of the state registry system. So that may mean that, that just that the information hasn't gone through yet. It could be that they went through their doctor's office and it hasn't gone through it or some other way. So those families are being reached out and being asked if they would like to share one way or the other. And then if they do, they, it's a yes, it gets added to the, to the pile. So the likelihood of us getting to eighty percent, I will tell you that the commissioner's call for the public as well, the commissioner's call this week was the Hockington situation being a success. There are a number of high schools on the four ninety-five belt that are there. In talking to a local superintendent, the state numbers show that they are as a community, but their actual numbers aren't there again. So, and remember, when you show, look at the community number, what you're seeing is all students in that bracket. So they may not attend North Public School. So they may not attend North High. They may be at Fien, they may be at Southeastern, they may be at the Aggie, they may be at Sevarian, but they're still in the sixteen to nineteen bracket or the.
Right. And that, so.
Bracket may include people who are not students as well.
Correct. Right. The nineteen-year-olds that are very, you know, that are, that are not part of our enrollment per se. And then some of the questions that have come in is like school systems that are six to twelve, like a middle high school. They've asked, well, do you count that as six to eight and then nine to twelve or you, or just six to twelve? And they actually could go six to twelve and then the question becomes the, the secondary question becomes, well, if they're not vaccinated at all, potentially, are they part of the eighty percent? So the state's working out those situations.
And as far as staff, they've been asked.
We had staff. Staff, staff were asked at the high school through the nurse's office. We're utilizing the nurse's office for, for the major reason that they are significantly confidential
Yeah.
medical personnel. And then I get the, the data and I, I've asked for that from all of our schools in terms of the staffing. And that staff would include anybody that's in the building at any point. So if you come in and sub once a week, you're part of that, you're part of that collection of data.
Good. I just think it's important to share that information because there's a lot of, a lot of stories going around. So.
Yeah.
It's always nice to get that.
The biggest, the, the biggest success so far without, you know, getting into a huge debate, the biggest success so far is the test and stay for us. It is, it is vocal numbers that are, that are able to just go to the nurse in the morning, fifteen minutes, back to class.
And that's where we identified someone that tested positive.
Right. Well, the, the testing positive is through the contact tracing protocols and then the only negative that we're seeing is in this building in particular, the middle school, more and more students coming to school, not COVID sick, but sick. And then us trying to figure out what the sickness is. And as you know, there's a lot of crossover between the flu and the bug or I myself am vaccinated, but I had a, a test done the other day because I was stuffy. I had no cough. I had no fever. It was allergies for me. It was gone three days later because I visit classrooms because I am in the buildings. I just did what I thought for me was the best medical decision.
There was another question, but I can't remember.
I feel like we're going to have time for that question.
Yeah.
Okay. If nobody has any other business to bring forth, I'm going to open it up to public comment. I'm assuming that everybody who's come to our meetings, we never ever get people at these meetings. I'm assuming everybody wants to speak. So open comment session, what we're going to do is we're going to limit it to three minutes for a speaker if you can. Try and stay on topic and we'll give it a run through.
As before, I just remembered my question, if you don't mind for a second. Joe, do we have any clarification on kids who are vaccinated? Because in reading the, the print of the test and stay, kids who are vaccinated cannot participate in test and stay. They have no quarantine restrictions. Right. So even.
So far, that's the regulation.
Right. So even though kids, even though people who are vaccinated can be carriers and can still get COVID, there's no test and stay for them. There's no, if they're close contact, go, continue on. That's correct. Right. Okay.
Everyone, just one second. Everyone, just one second. Do you have anybody coming up to speak? And when you call me, you just say your name.
How we all doing? Nick Schlecker, forty North Worcester Street, Norton Mass. Glad to hear that we're at least starting to move forward. But I got a little thing here just because I didn't know where we were at. Don't just read it because it's easier for me to collect my thoughts when it's on the paper. Chairman Savage, you told me, Mr. Schlecker, hold our feet to the fire. I'm the second person who will, and now I am. I've asked for instance virtually, and I keep getting sent in different directions, so now everyone is together. Hopefully, we can actually get some concrete answers. I want to take this time to explore, I want to take this time and explain the frustration over the past five weeks or so in this district. Here's a timeline of my experience over the past five weeks. Nine eight, Norton School Committee holds an open forum for all taxpayers and parents who express concerns with D E mandates of masked students in public schools. September ninth, school committee votes unanimously in favor of making masks optional at the Little Lancers program as they are a part of the D E and state mandate. Nine fifteen, J C S Assistant Principal, Mrs. Baker, is instructed by Dr. Byetta to send out a survey to Little Lancers' parents, asking their opinions on the mask-wearing procedures. September twenty-fourth, the the survey results are sent to Little Lancers' community, in which fifty-two percent of parents voted for no mask or optional mask, forty-eight percent for mandated mask, seventy-six percent said they would not leave the program regardless of this decision, twenty-one percent were still undecided at that time, and three percent said they would pull their child if they didn't get their way. On nine twenty five, I believe, sorry, fourteen days after the policy was voted on unanimously by all of you, to update, the town citizens received at the last school committee meeting were very vague and something along the lines of were in negotiation with Norton Teachers Association. September twenty-fourth, fifteen days after the policy changed, I emailed five school committee members asking for clarification on what exactly was going on with the situation and what was the holdup. I got a response from no one. Wednesday, September twenty-ninth, twenty days after the policy was voted on, and five days after my original email, I followed up with a second email asking for a response. Finally, Mrs. Cohen responded to me, telling me that Dr. Beta would be able to answer specific questions around the negotiations. I forwarded the original email to Dr. Byetta, as instructed. Dr. Byetta said he was not on the original email and thinks it should be kept with the school committee. Dr. Byetta did comment that if he said Chairperson Savas thinks it is appropriate, Dr. Beta will respond. Thursday, September thirtieth, Chairperson Savas responds approving Dr. Byetta to answer my questions. Dr. Byetta sends an email later that morning responding to my questions. And here we are, five weeks later. No public communication of the Little Lancers' community, no updates, no transparency whatsoever from the school committee. We get absolutely nothing unless we have to reach out, and even that communication is very limited. We are just up to sit, wait, and become increasingly increasingly frustrated with the process, and it has me questioning what exactly is the point of the Norton School Committee. My hope here is that the school committee would have pushed this further already, that you were being proactive with your information rather than reactive. Why are we sitting back for five weeks and not asking updates from Dr. Byetta and communicating those updates to the Little Lancers' parents? Your job is to be the liaison from the taxpayers and parents of this of this town to our schools. You're supposed to be our advocates, you're an extension of us. I assume the reason you got involved in schools and on the school committee is to enhance that relationship. This is why you've been elected to the position you hold. It's not Dr. Byetta's job to respond to me and waste time in his day responding to emails that our elected leaders on the school committee should be able to handle. He does not need to answer to me. I'm not his boss, and quite frankly, I'm just probably a pain to him at this point. I imagine he cringes when he sees an email from me. I certainly appreciate the responses from him, but why is he dealing with this mess? The words of we are parents too, we want the best for our children, we want to communicate with parents, we stress transparency, we want Norton Norton School parents to be involved in our schools, we want our schools to fit within the Norton community. Those words I've heard over and over throughout the years with this group. You appear, you appear to take actions on those words. You voted for a change in policy, you seem to be around the right path, and then the execution of the policy came. And that has made me think where your true intentions lie. I cannot fathom how you can sit back as a committee and not demand answers and accountability of an educational policy you changed because clearly the committee felt strong enough about it. It appears you have also been informed as have, as have I, Dr. Byetta, informed that the policy requires impact bargaining with the Norton Teachers Association because this directly affects some of the members' working conditions. Has the school committee asked why? Has there any been, has been any conversations with Dr. Byetta, with legal counsel, with the N T A, asking what exactly needs to be in part, impact bargained? I don't know all the collective bargaining policies and procedures. I'm not going to sit here and pretend I do. However, I did my research. I prepared myself for this meeting as much as I possibly could. I found chapter one fifty E on masslegislative.gov, which includes language about labor relations and public employees, and I also found the eleventh edition of a guide to Massachusetts Public Employee Collective Bargaining Law. I've read both documents pretty thoroughly over the last two weeks. I want, I want to ask the committee, was that?
You're you're running over, you're actually covering some of your time. If someone else wants to yield time away from my attention. To, anybody else?
Okay, good, thank you. Appreciate it, guys. I want to ask the committee and superintendent, what exactly is changing in the teachers' working conditions from September eighth to September ninth? They are still in the classroom, they are still teachers of Little Lancers' program, they are still going to be required to wear masks as teachers. They have all the proper P P, cleaning supplies, air purifiers, updated H VAC systems, windows open to provide fresh, fresh air, test and stay protocols in place, and have ample opportunity to protect themselves with the vaccine. The common sense here is simple. Nothing, nothing is changing in their working conditions, and there's no difference from a teacher in Little Lancers to a teacher in first grade at the J C S. The only thing that is changing is students' learning conditions. And finally, after nineteen months, I think we can all agree they were finally about to change for the better. We know, we know those times are from pre-March two thousand and twenty. To me, this is not a working condition issue. This has been mislabeled by the N T A union representatives, and it appears no one has been able to push this matter correctly. This is a matter of educational policy because it directly affects the students, not the teachers. The school committee voted on an educational policy on nine-nine, and by given definition on page one fifty-six and one fifty-seven of the document, permissive subjects of bargaining involve core governmental decisions. Either the employee or the union may refuse to negotiate over a permissive subject. And right there, among other things, is a listed examples of permissive subjects. It reads educational policy. I'm putting myself in your shoes. I understand you lose the teachers' union respect, your job becomes much more challenging and quite frankly impossible. With the amount of power the unions have on our districts and our school committees, we have seen this across the country for the past few weeks. However, my suggestion is we implement the educational policy change that you all made, and if Dr. Byetta or the school committee feels it's worth negotiating with the N T A, you can continue negotiations and keep the union admin relationship strong. However, the policy of recommending and not requiring masks in Little Lancers is carried out immediately. The teachers work through the negotiations and the educational policy change from both sides reached an agreement and where everybody wins. This is nothing new to C B As. The Norton Police and Norton Fire have worked in this town without contracts and without C B As and still provided outstanding services as their unions were negotiating with town officials. It's our public safety departments. If our public safety departments can provide lifesaving emergency responses, I believe our teachers can handle small educational policy change. Let's as a community push this finally across the finish line. This matter does not need to be collectively bargained. The N T A leadership needs simply drop the grievance, accept the school committee's decision. Decision on that, up, up, sorry, accept the school committee's decision on optical, optimal masking, optional masking in the Little Lancers program, and look out for the best interests of our children. The parents have spoken, the survey has spoken, your school committee has spoken. Stop hiding behind the union language, stop using our children as pawns, stop holding our children hostage because your agenda has been interrupted, and start giving our children a chance to thrive in Norton Public School System. Thank you.
Okay. I've been advised during these sessions not to respond, and so of course I'm about to completely ignore that and respond anyways. So just a couple of thoughts. First of all, on communication, the the lack of communication wasn't for lack of desire to communicate, or so it was, there was not much to say, quite frankly. I appreciate you holding our feet to the fire. Trying to, I'm trying to, different questions you asked. You know, we we're moving forward. You heard earlier, starting, this kind of might have been following, we're moving forward the policy. I understand the frustration that this thing moves slowly. I I don't know that I agree with with you that the Teachers Association is using everybody as pawns. They have the right to do this, you know. I I get that you think that we can go around that somehow. I appreciate that you realize that that puts us in a weird, tenuous position. Kevin, you don't need to, it's, I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to back, sorry. I don't want to back and forth again, but you know, it's, it, I get it, I do, and we're moving it forward, and most of the stuff you, actually all, probably all the factual stuff you said, I I don't disagree with you. You know, we we can only do so much. I think we all are a little bit frustrated with the pace of it. Maybe not as much as you guys, but you know, we're frustrated with it as well. We don't like to do things up here and say, hey, we want, we want to do this, this is the direction we want to move in, and then not get there. So we are trying to get there, trust me. I I I get it, I get the frustration. It's, we're not trying to stonewall it. I I think that I can speak for myself and others can speak for themselves here. You know, we didn't vote, put that through because we didn't want it. That's how we feel. So, you know, they I I don't know what to tell you on that, you know, it's, some of this, like you said, was, you know, was, is pretty harsh, quite honestly. Like, I don't, I don't think we're we're not trying to serve you guys. I think we are, and yeah, I mean, a hundred percent, we, you know, we ran for this to to make the educational system better. This isn't something we signed on for, but, you know, to quote Belcheck, it is what it is, right? You get, you get the cards, you're dealt, and you play that hand. So we're playing it as best we can right now. We're trying to get this thing through. You know, we're looking at our numbers and hoping we get to eighty percent, and maybe we can pull Hopkinton and, you know, do what they do. I don't know we're gonna get there, but you know, I don't, I don't think we're in disagreement, and and I get the idea that you guys want this done very quickly. Believe it or not, this is as quickly as we can move it forward right now. And it's, it's where we're at, so.
So come October twenty-fifth, is Little Lancers unmasked?
Little, well, not unmasked, it is.
Masked optional.
It's optional.
So why can we put it through October twenty-fifth, but we can't vote it through now?
Well, I want to give Dr. Betts some time to.
We've had five weeks to us.
Oh, I I remember the one, one thing I wanted to mention. The the survey, you understand that the purpose of the survey, I I think there might be some misunderstanding about the survey. The survey was not to find out, hey, what does everybody want to do, and and because we, we want to change our policy based on what you want. The survey was, and and Dr. Byetta and I talked about this before it went out, and and I was instrumental in having that go out. It was to find out where we were gonna stand, because that can matter, right? If if we send it out and only three people come back and say, yeah, we don't want masks, that's a whole different situation than half the people not wanting masks. So we just needed to know where we stood. I I think it might have been some misunderstanding of what the purpose is.
I think ultimately, the survey doing it after you made a policy was probably a bad move. That probably should have been done before a policy was made, because sending it out after the fact isn't gonna help us because we have voted on a policy, and then all those numbers come back and say, hey, we're gonna yank our kids. It would have been a very easy decision for, to say, hey, we're we're gonna go back on the policy.
Right, the only thing is, is I I, and this is my own personal preference, I hate to see us in a situation where every time we decide something, we're sending out a poll, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't want to do that.
I completely agree.
And I want to be uncomfortable with with the vote as my own vote, and say, you know, this is, this is how I feel about this. So, you know, I get what you're saying. Could we, could we have polled people beforehand? Yeah, we could have, but I I'm not sure how much we're gonna get out of that, too. Like, you know, it's, it's, unless you get every single person responding, you can almost kind of say, all right, we gotta throw the data away, because in any type of those polls, right, any, any time somebody, whatever, the people that respond are the people who feel most vehemently about it one way or the other. And so that's not necessarily, you kind of get the tips and the tails on the argument. So I get what you're saying, you know. With respect to the the last question, we kind of got sidetracked. Yeah, it's, it's been five weeks. I I understand. And we're moving forward now, and, you know, Dr. Byetta has not heard a lot about this, you know, we we want this done. It's, I'm sure surprising him slightly as well. So I want to give him a little time. I think a week is fair to let him get the data back from parents, say, yeah, my kid has to be masked, my kid could be masked optional, whatever. I think it's a fair amount of time. If you don't, I I get it. I get why you're frustrated, but it's it's a reasonable amount of time for my.
I have a question. Why wasn't this done over the last five weeks? Why are we just starting this now?
I don't have an answer for that. I don't know. I have an answer.
Give it the answer, bud. The school committee made a decision to go with an early childhood vote versus a K to twelve vote. They are one of the only committees in the state that's done that. Most of the other school districts that have that have a preschool that is actually not physically in the same building with the rest of it, in our case, a K to three. That's what complicates matters in terms of working conditions, is that you have to work through those students are not just in the preschool. They are in parts of, other parts of the building where K to K plus grades are required to wear a mask. So that's part of the process of getting to a resolution, and if you remember, the biggest complaint that I had on behalf of the committee and myself to you folks was, we literally found out right at the beginning of school on what the regulations were going to be. They were left originally, if you remember, to the school committee, and they were taken from the school committee on the twenty fourth or twenty-fifth of August, I don't quote me on the day, but it's around. And then we were starting school, I think, with the teachers that Tuesday or Wednesday, and we didn't have a full school committee meeting scheduled until the eighth, as part of that process.
Okay, we're gonna watch here. As you guys were having that conversation, I was having this against my mask. It did not move at all. I'm gonna put it in real quick. And I got a couple of questions. Is there a an industrial hygienist that's actually stated that these kids have to wear masks inside schools? And if so, there should be one for each single building individually, and the parents have the right to see the documentation of the industrial hygienist that says to put the mask on in school, because otherwise, that's in law. It said, you can't just say you need to put a mask on. That's, that's why they they put in stores masks are optional.
My only response to that would be that I'm in one very clear particular case. I'm following a K to twelve state mandate back to the district. I don't have an option on if they're wearing masks or not.
Given without an industrial hygienist saying that each building is cleared to do so, you're not supposed to.
Well, my. Sounds like a great question for the commissioner then.
That's, that's, that's.
I don't know.
Technically, like, this shouldn't, there should not be no sort of mandate at all.
But you're coming at us when we're, we're doing what we're being told to do. I mean, I think you know by our vote of five zero where we kind of all feel about this.
Yeah. I'm not even gonna do this, because I already did it last time, and I actually didn't even start it.
That's a valid question.
I already did it in a funny.
I mean, I would go to the commissioner with that. Here's the thing. Last year, we had a, we had a state of emergency, right? We had a statewide mask mandate. We did it, we were told, right? Now, we don't have either of those things, but we have a commissioner telling us what needs to happen in the schools. Right?
Well, I, I get, I get. Can us as parents ask if you guys can request the industrial hygienist that says that these kids have to wear the masks in schools?
The Department of Elementary, Second Education worked with the Department of Public Health. I don't know if they have a hygienist. I know there's a lot of titles on 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 the memo system that I get from them.
There's only fifteen in Massachusetts.
And they, they're the ones who made the decision on public schools. They came from D E in conjunction with the Department of Public Health. That's how the decision was made. I I don't know what specialist they used or didn't use. I don't have any of that. I can tell you that we spent time and money looking at our air exchanges in our buildings and our air quality. We paid for tests at the, at the beginning of COVID went back, and we did it again at the start of this school year because in in March, it's when we moved there, all the kids being back with masks, not the hyper one. So we did that at our own and shared that as part of our showing that our building's air quality is safe and that the air exchanges are taking place according to the recommended minimum requirements.
Didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just, I think that you feel as though we have more power than we do. We we really don't.
Not in this case.
We really don't, and it is beyond frustrating. I I feel your frustration because I'm there personally. I'm done with this.
I mean, I.
I followed the rules last year. Now, you've got clubs in Boston where people are side by side, drinking, singing with no masks on, and that's okay, yet our children are sitting at desks with masks on. I understand your frustrations. I am right there with you. Unfortunately, the commissioner, we don't matter. It doesn't matter. We send a letter off saying, give it back to the local level? Nothing, nothing. So maybe if parents like yourselves start to form and you guys go storm the State House, then maybe they'll start to listen. We, he won't speak to us either.
They won't speak to us. I called out Baker to to have a one-on-one debate on Fox twenty-five News, and he would not respond. I called out D E. I I contacted them, I reached out. I I've done everything.
I hear you.
And they're, they're not responding, and it's not right, because, right? Everybody is being abused. You guys are all being abused at being forced to wear a mask. That's not right, they are children, and I was under the impression that the school could not give my child a mask. Is that correct, or is that, am I wrong about that?
We've been providing masks since day one.
Even if they have a mask?
Yeah, we, we, our policy states that it has to be a mask and not a gator. Originally, because we had instead of a face mask, a set. Um, originally because we had instead of a face mask, instead of a face covering, we had a actual mask policy that was.
Yeah, because the shield don't make no sense. Like, we do virus can't go under and around.
Well, we do have students and staff medically that do bear the shield. That has happened and I just.
That doesn't make sense. But my daughter was at recess and she goes to school with two masks a day. She's changed, she's supposed to change her mask in the middle of the, the day, at least after lunch. And instead of her getting, I don't know exactly what happened. She is only six years old. Um, I guess at recess she lost the mask or whatever, but she was given this mask right here instead of the mask that she has. And I personally send her in a, in with a mask that has one thin layer because I do not want no triple coated double thing trapping even more in. Because as everybody knows, I already proved the CO2. I feel like an idiot though. I didn't, I didn't hit the stop button.
All right. So I gotta, I gotta cut you off because you actually, three minutes over unless somebody wants to yield to him.
That's, this all right? Good.
And I'm going to, before you talk. We'll hold answers to anything till the end just because it's hard for me to, to keep track of the time. I have to like, if we're answering in the middle, I have to stop this time to start it, restart it. So.
Does there have to be a timeline? There's so many people here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've got to keep it to, to the three minutes. I mean, it's, it's.
Last time we did it, we have like.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand.
Right. Okay.
And I mean.
There's just a couple.
Listen, I'm, I'm not saying I don't want anybody to speak right. I'm just saying, it's just not a lot.
Okay.
Um, well, I have a lot of questions, so hopefully you can write quickly then. Um, so my first question is, what's the update on the letter, Dinesh, that you had handed out the last school?
Signed today.
Okay. Can we get a copy of that?
Uh, sure.
You, I'm sure have my email.
Yeah.
Send that to me. Thank you. Um, also, are you aware of the proposal that was submitted by, um, a few superintendents out of the Old Colony Roundtable to DESI? Is anybody familiar with this? So this is something I'm asking if you guys would be interested in doing as well to help do something for us. Um, they submitted a proposal to the commissioner, which was that if a school cannot demonstrate the eighty percent vaccination rate, then each community could use their own town or county data to determine a mask requirement. Each school district may also overrule the metric listed below if the percent positivity in an individual building meets these criteria. This would be the case for Berkeley. This is their proposal. Um, we've been below one percent since school opened. All quarantine and testing protocols through DESI would still be applied and followed. And so their proposal was if you are at one percent or below positivity rate, no masks would be required for students or staff. If you're between one point one percent and two point nine percent, masks would be recommended for all unvaccinated students and staff. If you're between, excuse me, between three point zero and four point nine percent, masks strongly recommended for all students and staff. And if you're at five point zero or higher, masks required for all students and staff. Um, so this is something, I thought it was a very creative proposal. Just wondering if you guys might be interested in doing something similar to that. I know you're in a different round table superintendent, sorry. Maybe I have plenty of contacts. I would love to work with you guys to get you connected with other school committee members who also want to do something like this. Um, and then my other question regarding this subject is, does the district receive any money for hosting an injection clinic? Just curious on that.
It does not.
Thank you. Um, and then something completely different is regarding the letter that was, um, basically publicized by the U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland regarding the FBI and DOJ regarding parents in school boards. Are you all familiar with this letter? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to know, are you aware that Merrick Garland's son-in-law is the co-founder of a company that supports and pushes critical race theory material? Are you aware of the name of this company? It's Panorama Education. Panorama is the service that's being used for the survey of our, of our students. Um, I'm curious, what research have you done on this group? Who is responsible for that research? I thought I heard Dr. Baez had mentioned that it was a state requirement earlier. Is that true?
No, those are two different surveys I was mentioning. One is a health survey. It's not a state requirement, but it comes from the state.
Okay. So who's responsible for signing a contract with this company? How long is that contract for? Can we get a copy of that? If you go to Panorama's website, they make it very clear in their FAQs that they are not associated with CRT at all. However, I'd like to read a few quotes from Panorama's co-founder in which he published in his company blog. This must change as millions of people across the country stand up to protest this system of racism and oppression. We stand with them. We commit to dismantling systemic racism. We commit to embodying and spreading anti-racist practices. Education represents one of the most important levers for change in America. At worst, our education system can perpetuate oppression and injustice, withholding opportunity from children of marginalized communities and allowing racism to continue unchecked. We now serve ten million students in fifteen hundred school districts. This puts us in a unique position to make change to our institutions through our partnership with school districts. A reimagined education system is our anti-racist protest. Um, and then here are a few questions that were part of a Panorama Education survey on part, um, that were part of a social emotional learning survey by Panorama that was sent to Rhode Island students. At your school, how often are you encouraged to think more deeply about race-related topics? When there are major news events related to race, how often do adults at your school talk about them with students? Do you know that Rhode Island state law allows Rhode Island residents who are U.S. citizens to pre-register to vote at age sixteen? Why are these questions relevant? What is the end goal? How do these questions improve the education of our children? One Panorama's workshop is titled S E L as Social Justice: dismantling white supremacy within systems itself and is designed to explore actionable strategies for using social and emotional learning as a vehicle for social justice and advocacy in your community. Panorama defines systemic racism as a systematic distribution of resources, power, and opportunity in our society to the benefit of people who are white. I'd like to know the school committee members' thoughts on this. Do you believe schools should be teaching things other than academics? Do you think it's a school's place to push an ideology on the children? What would you like to do about this, if anything? I'd like to get a copy of the survey that's being sent out to grades three through twelve. And Dr. Vayetta, you mentioned homeschooling numbers doubling from last year. And, um, you know, maybe this is part of the reason why.
Dr. Stop here for one second. Anybody want to yield? You have two yielders left.
I'm good.
You've already, you can't yield twice.
I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
Um, so I'll, I'll start by saying the, the initial, um, the initial comment about the, the proposal to, um, to allow towns to have their own metrics, et cetera. I, I would, I would look at it. I don't know much about it and obviously it was a little bit hard to follow, um, what everything was as you were going on. I will tell you positivity rate and I know it's what they use. I think positivity rate is, is a little bit of a sketchy metric, quite frankly. Um, telling me how many people were positive and tested doesn't necessarily mean anything. If one guy goes in and tests positive, it's not a hundred percent. I mean, it's, you know, uh, but I, but I would look at it certainly. I mean, if it's something that makes sense, yeah, because it doesn't sound like we're going to get to the eighty. So I'm, I'm not against that, quite frankly. Um, with respect to like, you know, can we see this, that, et cetera? Everything we do is public record. Every single thing by law is public record. So you can see whatever you want to see, quite frankly. Um, uh, and then with, with respect to the whole CRT thing. I mean, listen, I'm, I'm the wrong guy you're talking to about that, you know, I, I judge people on the merits and that's that. I mean, I, I don't follow this whole thing. I don't understand it, quite frankly. As far as I know, we don't teach it. And I, I get that it's kind of the, the movement de jour. Um, I, I don't, I don't really have a ton of comments on that.
I respectfully say that if you're the chair of the school committee, you probably should read up on it. And CRT is now being relabeled as social emotional learning.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't know if you're following what I'm saying. Like, I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe in it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Like, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the way we should approach things. You know, everybody's different. That's it. That is story. Every single person is different. Every single thing that you do and decide in your life and, and every interaction you have with somebody that changes who you are slightly, right? So tonight, you and I are talking right now. Things about you and things about me are, are going to slightly change. We, we base our lives, we base how, how we perceive things on our lives, on our lives past. That's it. I don't need to sit here and say, oh, it's because I'm this or that, or I'm tall or short, or, you know, I, whatever. I, I, I don't, I don't prescribe to that, quite frankly. So I, I get what you're saying that I should, I should read up on it, but I, I, I think I know where I stand on it without reading up. I, I've read, I've read enough to know where I stand on it, quite frankly.
Are you comfortable with that being a part of the Rhode Island School District?
It is not part of this Rhode School District.
This social emotional learning that's being sent out to the.
I don't, I don't think they're the same thing.
There's no correlation.
Yeah, they're not the same thing. Like, you know, are, are you okay in school? Are, do you feel bullied? Is very different than CRT. Very, very different things.
But it's why I like a, a copy of that specific survey being sent out because I would like to see the questions that are being.
Again, public record. You, give you whatever you want. And, and if it's something you see, you say, hey, you know, I don't like this. And I look and say, yeah, I, I get what you're saying. I, I agree with you. Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss that, you know, but to my knowledge and, and I feel like I have decent knowledge of it, there's nothing like that being taught in our schools. I, I know that it's, again, it's the, the thing de jour now for, for people on, on, on either side of the, you know, the aisle, if you will. We're just trying to teach our kids. We're trying to make our kids ready to, to go out to the world and, and get a career and, and be good citizens. And I don't mean that to say like, you have to do this to be good or that to be good, just to make, make smart decisions. You know, make them, make them thinkers, I guess. That's, to me, that's what education is it about. That's, that's it. It's make them, make them able to think on their feet, make them able to look through a problem and say, okay, what are the logical solutions to this problem? That's, that's all we're trying to do here. We're just trying to get better kids. Any else want to comment on it?
I, I still, still trying to figure out how we weren't talking about masks to CRT. I don't even, I, I don't even know how we even just got here.
Open forum.
Hi, Dina. Hi, uh, General. Um, I have a couple of questions that are coming in from our guests at home. If you wouldn't mind, um, me sharing those as well since we're, um, having this open forum component. Um, the first one is from a gentleman named David. Does the school committee see the extremely high COVID cases since the start of school? Especially the JCS school with the Little Lancers program is housed. Do they still feel masks shouldn't be required? What are you going to do to keep our children safe when unmasked kids are in the same room?
Can you get home?
Jen, can you just say that last word again? I couldn't hear you.
What are we going to keep?
Absolutely. Um, do they still feel masks shouldn't be required? What are you going to keep, do to keep our kids safe when unmasked kids are in the same room?
I, I think, I mean, when, with the policy that we voted on, we're not, we're not telling people to walk through the door and take your mask off. If you feel more comfortable with a mask on, wear your mask. We're just saying that if you, if, if parents choose not to, then, then don't.
Well, I think it comes down to what the state gives us as guidance.
Right.
I mean, we're talking, again, we're sitting here talking K to twelve and Little Lancers. I mean, you know, Little Lancer's policy is what it is, but K to twelve is governed by what the state tells us. If they say this is what you have to do, this is what we have to do. That's just how it is. So I, I mean, I think, yes, this, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't have a real answer, but we're talking about two different scenarios. We have had cases in all schools. It's just, that's how it's been. I mean, the numbers are published weekly on Fridays, I believe. So the data is there, but what's, what's it all showing?
Um, there's another question here. Um, if we get close to eighty percent as school, how can we ensure that those students who have chosen not to get vaccinated will not be bullied because they are ruining it for others?
So my, my quick answer would be if we get close to eighty percent, but not over eighty percent.
Yes.
If theory, DESI would still have everybody masked, so there really wouldn't be any way to know who did, did not get vaccinated. So I, I don't, I don't see it as a, as a valid question.
That's all we have from.
Well, I think also we already have bullying, um, protocols in place. They would, they would be the things that we would go to.
James, just for the record, uh, the anti-bullying law is very, very clear. It is the only disciplinary issue that stays with the student during their entire time pre-K to twelve. The student moves from eighth grade to ninth grade, discipline starts anew. The bullying report stays with the student. So, right, we would carry out under state statute, same protocols. Um, if a student.
And those are built upon, right?
Those are built upon, including, uh, potential, uh, being a police matter. Also one of the only ones besides drugs and alcohol and guns and, and assault.
For clarification, can I just ask, um, I don't think anybody would really know who's vaccinated and who isn't. That's not public.
Sort of saying.
So I would assume that it's all confidential, correct? And that, um, it's not like unless a person is sharing that information themselves, nobody else would really know the status, whether they were or were not vaccinated. So.
Unless if you got over eighty percent, then you would. Because someone had to wear a mask per state guidelines right now. Well, Hopkinton right now, those fifteen percent of those kids are vaccinated.
Or they could be choosing to wear one.
You know, could be true then.
But that's just the facts here. Probably not going to happen.
Same.
I, I can tell you, I can tell you as a former high school principal, it's a nightmare. Anything, anything you're going to say sixty percent, eighty percent, ninety percent. I'm not, I'm not agreeing with her. It's, I'm just saying, any type of a thing that isn't either you can or you can't. It's, it's, it, it's a cycle. It's a segregation. It's a cycle. And I've said this, regardless of what you think of my, certain my, my views on masks, the fact of the matter is as a former high school principal, I could tell you it's a nightmare to say that sixty, eighty percent of kids, you could do this, but the other twenty we're going to say, and then how you police it. It's, it's a nightmare to police, a nightmare.
Anybody else, Jen?
No, that was.
No, that was it.
Okay, if, uh, if there's.
No, there's one more. Two more, I'm sorry.
Um, my name is Janak Rob. I'm a grandmother of a kindergarten. Um, boys, physically, we've talked about masks and stuff and everything, but I have, um, a high, uh, industrial hygienist, Steve Putty. He's one of the top of the country. And he's, uh, he's done over four hundred law cases and everything. And I have a chart here that, this is the diameter of a magnified hair. And this little dot is of one micron, this small little red dot. And the coronavirus is forty, is a tenth of a micron. So it's forty thousand times smaller than this area and a thousand times smaller diameter. So it goes through any mask you're wearing. The mat is like a mosquito going through a fence. The facts that, I mean, I just think that we should deal with that. If we're going to deal with science and facts, we should deal with science and facts. And like the sunlight dust that you see going, it's five hundred times larger than Corona. Probably nineteen. So masks really don't protect you because of the small aerosols that come through. And I, I think, I, I've sent you that, I think I sent it to Steve Putty.
Yeah, I actually read it.
You did?
I did. I promise you I did. I am reading the stuff I get.
And also, so he was saying the best thing was for air, ventilation, air, opening up windows, getting air systems. That, that's way better because masks really don't, um, do anything for getting rid of that. And then also scientists, big studies have shown that it lowers the oxygen levels and the level of rising carbon dioxide levels affects respiratory function, actually traps exhales viral pathogens, which increases the severity of viral overload by collecting colonized viruses and bacteria. And they're dangerous for those with asthma and respiratory issues. A major threat to a child's development, anxiety, sleep disorders, and create fear of germs. Then he had a whole list of things that, like, he also had a whole list of things. So then we go to testing. So testing has problems because of false positive. I don't know if you're aware of this, the guy, Carey Mullis, that invented the PCR test, says it doesn't detect viruses or infections or illness. The PCR tests were set at forty cycles, the error rate at thirty-five cycles is ninety-seven percent false positive. He said that the more cycles, the greater the false positives. Thirty would be a max to ever be used. A DNA test, he says, if you do it well, can find anything, anyone. This is why we have false positives and my people with no symptoms, so. So I have a whole sheet on, yeah. And, uh, and so back in, um, to masks, when we were told in February and March of twenty twenty by Dr. Fauci that masks don't work. He was telling the truth about the science when he said that. Because in two thousand eight, he wrote a paper on Spanish flu in nineteen eighteen. And he said, most of the ducks, not from the flu, but they were from bacterial pneumonia caused by wearing masks. So he said, so he went against his own science of his own words. Those children are more of a, no more risk of COVID than the flu. And they're be harmed drastically immensely while wearing masks. It's of no purpose. So now that everybody knows the facts, I hope that people can just maybe go to the. So now that everybody knows the facts, I hope that people can just maybe go to the D E S.
I can't show it here. You're wrapping up great. Now you're gonna cut short.
That's fine.
Do you want me to get into these into the wreckage as formal documents for the school committee?
You can, yeah. Thank you for listening. I'm I'm glad. I was glad to hear that everybody is basically on.
Did we have one other person who wanted to speak right now?
I have one. I have one more on online, Dinesh.
They can they can wait till the people in place.
They can go. I'm just, I have to raise some things that she just talked about. I don't want to.
All right, Jen, what do we got?
Um, we know the case rates for each school per the MPS website. Is it possible to be shown data for close contacts that end up becoming positive?
No. I right now between everything that we're doing, I I don't know where, what the intent of that data.
Ultimately, they're saying um it would help to show if the spread in schools is happening.
Yeah, answer's no.
I mean, the fact of the matter is, um, we we have two situations thus far this year that we quote may consider an in-school situation. But again, the details of where these things start it is what it is. What we try to do is if a student was positive and then they happen to be sitting next to a close contact, then that student becomes contacted. It was a close contact during the school day, then we trace that back as being a uh situation that happened in school. But again, it's may. I can't factually say one way or the other. I think it's a hundred percent.
Hello, Gina Argentitas, two oh seven Bay Road. Um, I just have a few questions and a couple of comments. Um, one being in regards to that social emotional learning. Um, and I was just wondering if you guys could elaborate on what's being taught or what will be taught. As Dr. Vieta did mention that there will be that will be addressed somehow. So I'm wondering, um, I want, I would like access to that and requesting access to the curriculum being used or what will be used um at each grade level from a personal view. And where can I find that material? Um, skip a few things. Also, quickly, I just wanted to comment about vaccine clinics um in in general. Um, and why are they taking place during school hours? Um, a school is a place for learning, not for medical procedures or anything like that to be done. That's my personal opinion. I do keep my children home on those days. Like, um.
On what days?
On the days that you guys have like the flu vaccine or whatever was done in the past.
We've done the flu vaccine. The flu vaccine has been here in the district for years.
I understand, but I'm just wondering why it's being, I mean, it's not relating to like the mask or the COVID shot, but just generally speaking, I heard you guys talking about um clinics and stuff like that. Just wondering why it is being done at school during school hours.
Well, the the flu test has been done per permission of parents only. Um, so that's an individual parent choice to allow for it to happen during school. Um, that's not all parents. So if you don't want it, you don't do it. It doesn't impact your child. And the COVID, the COVID testing has not been done during uh the vaccinations for COVID have not been done during school time at all.
And back to the flu, I do understand that I need you need consent for that, but mistakes do happen. Um, and I don't feel comfortable sending my kids to school when medical procedures are taking place at school. I just wanted to make that aware because they are missing time on learning. Um, and in regards to the COVID vax, um, so vaccinated students don't need to test and stay, but they can still get it and spread it. So I'm asking for vaccinated students to be included in the test and stay procedure. Um, is this something that the school committee uh would support? Um, actually Fauci and the CDC publicly stated that the vaccine can't prevent transmission or infection. Um, the vaccinated have the same or higher viral levels than the unvaccinated. They should be included in the test and stay program too. Marshfield actually just changed their policy to reflect that information.
I have to look into it. I don't I don't. It's my understanding through the protocols. I'll verify tomorrow, but uh, it's a DPH and DESI um outline. It was actually shared with all families online or sent to all of you. It's a packet and it has the actually scenarios in it, um, sent out before the start of school. Um, happy to send that to you again as well, and I can ask that question.
Uh, yeah, I do have that. I'm just wondering why like the CDC and Fauci, like the big, you know, people are giving them guidance and we're it it's just, it doesn't make sense. So much of this does not make sense.
Well, I don't disagree with you on that. I agree with you a hundred percent. So let's go back for a couple on a on the same type of situation without um prolonging this for you. Um, if you remember, CDC and DESI originally didn't agree on three feet and six feet. There are recommendations, right? Uh, if you look at air quality testing, there are recommendations, not requirements. If you look at uh air exchanges in schools, they're recommendations, not requirements. They consider best practices around when you have twenty-four kids in a classroom, you have thirty bodies in a classroom, or whatever the case may be. So I think that's just another, what you're bringing up is again, another example of feds versus state and the state decision being let's do this through their department. Everything that we've gotten has come through DESI and Mass Department of Public Health.
Okay, so if Marshfield has changed it, I mean, would that be, would that be something, I know you'd have to look into it, but would that be something you all would be interested in considering?
I think there's a difference between if they changed it and if their change was approved. Because a change like that would likely have to go through DESI and DPH. So they, we as a school committee could could make the change, but it might not get approved by the state, which governs how we put the program in place. So I mean, I I I just, I didn't want to say like, I just don't want to hear like a blanket statement like, you know, this town changed it. That's fine, but it doesn't mean it was approved and allowed by the state.
Okay, so is that something that you guys would look into and?
I just had um a meeting with the Marshall superintendent interesting yesterday. You say dear friend of mine, so I'll be counting tomorrow.
That sounds great. I'll be looking forward to that update. Thank you.
Okay. Jen, do we have any other questions online?
No other questions.
Okay. That is going to conclude the open forum. And does anybody, the school committee have any other business? No. Okay, uh, next meeting is going to be Thursday, October twenty-eighth, right here at the middle school, six o'clock in the library. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, Kathleen Stern?
Yes.
Carolyn Gallagher?
Yes.
Sherry Cohen?
Yes.
Dan Chee?
Yes.
Dinesh Sabas, yes. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.